But we can go ahead and start on this pre-session. So let's do a real call, because that's all we really need, and we use first names, and it's very informal. So Shakira, you just want to start, and then go around.
Shakira, your call?
Erin Rodriguez.
Marsha Martin.
Suzie Belgaferines.
Jo Pep.
Shannon Floyd.
Diane Crisp.
And we do that because people can listen in. Let's do a fast update on our board's commissions, whatever. Whoever wants to go first can go.
I've got some.
Okay, John.
Golf, they just elected new officers, and they have a bond. They talked about their bond project updates. So some of the things that they're doing are like they're having this really great sprinkler system put in at Sunset, where they can really see where the dry spots are and where it's over moist. Consortium Cities had a mental health roundtable discussion, and then had the behavior health roadmap presented to us from the county. And then Parks and Rec had a yearly accomplishment PowerPoint where every aspect of the department went through everything. And they are having, you'll see in the new rec program for the spring, some new fee increases and everything. And they're just, would like to talk a little bit about, they're not able to meet their mark in regards to sometimes an 80% coverage of their costs. And then you need to maybe at some point talk about what that looks like. Is there a sweet spot where that really is?
Great, thanks. About golf courses. Anyone else? Marsha?
Yeah, just a heads up, but there's going to be a fairly substantial request for money. The pump station in the Windy App on activity channel is at its end of life, and they have analyzed the existing pump station, and there's no room to upgrade it. So they have to do the new one. And I have an email note that I'm not succeeding in finding right now, so I don't have the rough estimate that we were given, but it's substantial. Did you get one from Ken? Harold?
I think they raised me on it. I don't think I have an email on it.
So they're not, it's too soon to have a firm estimate anyway, but it's something that somehow got...
That doesn't sound good.
No, yeah, it's, I mean, it's 40 years old. So the sad thing is, everybody knows that's how long old-fashioned electrical power equipment works, and it should have been in somebody's budget for seven years or so, you know, so that we could be filling up the fund. But, so that's an ugly surprise. Other board stuff, not much, because the senior advisory board, who is the most active board that they have, has decided to educate themselves and do their own research for their segment of the population on affordable housing and housing and security. So they are probably going to be, they have set the goal of producing some budget regulations in the this month and next month, but they aren't there yet. So they've done a lot of work though.
Thanks. Not happy about that. Replacing the pump.
No, no, no. It's like they put the transformers so close together that you can't squeeze any bigger ones in, so.
Okay, who's next? Shakira?
Yeah, I can go. Well, transportation, we talked about the new coordinator for the task force, Vision Zero was there. We pretty much just went over our, the plan put together of what we'll be doing, the plan, the mobility plan and everything. Also, there was a lot of discussion about, from board members, about the streets not being plowed, and there's a misunderstanding with some of the board members that want the bike lanes plowed during the snow. And so we had that discussion. So it was kind of hard, and I was quiet for a long, a huge part of it, until I just couldn't take it anymore. And then I had to say that, you know, we have a shortage of staff, and it's important for our streets to be plowed. And then what the complaint was, was that the area where cars park, you know, they said, well, why don't you, some people were asking, well, why don't you make the cars move and things like that. So one of the things we did talk about, you know, like in major cities that get a lot of snow, like Chicago and New York and things like that, they were talking about they have signs up that said during this period of time for them to plow that you, a car can't be there, kind of like when sweepers come and sweep the city, you know, the streets. So we did discuss that. I don't know how feasible that is, but that may come back, and I have no clue. Longmont sister cities, we still don't know when Japan is, but there was a parent meeting with some of the other cities of Mexico and those who are going to Mexico, Northern Arapaho. What else? I go to NADA on Thursday morning, so I haven't gone to that one. I go Thursday. What else am I missing? Oh, LDDA, we have our retreat on the 28th. So.
Okay.
Yay!
Anyone else?
Sure. Hi. Okay, so, the North I-25 Coalition, the bus staying and the transportation hub there at Ken Pratt or 119 and I-25, they think will be done in four to seven months. It would be nice to have microtransit connected to that, but it seems like microtransit is going to go to about Sandstone Ranch where the city limit is. So we've got about three miles between there and the hub that an industrious person needs to start a business to, or we need to find a way to have microtransit go out that far. So there's some enthusiasm for it, because we'll ride down to Denver or up to Fort Collins, and that's will be a south-going platform on the west side of the highway and a north platform on the east side of the highway. And they've expanded that parking ride there, too. And I believe the tunnel that goes underneath is completely now. So there's access for bicycles and pedestrians to get across the highway safely underneath. See?
I know what you're going to say, Harold.
What's that?
I know what you're going to say.
What's that?
About microtransit.
Oh, yeah. I'll answer one of the questions in a little bit.
I'll get to that. So sorry. We tried to get to the last mile, now we have three more miles, so we'll figure it out, I'm sure. So then there's Longmont Economic Development. We had our retreat at the end of January. There's a lot of discussion, Harold was there, too, so he knew how to encompass everything we talked about. So we'll just leave it at that. To be continued, there's a lot of conversation about five different areas. We heard a lot of that in our retreat, and so how that develops, we'll keep you posted. We just did the GURP today in terms of the retirement pension fund, and we negotiated the mix a little bit. We did some good work there. We decided that we're going to meet our target point for next year, retirees. And then there's a ribbon cutting over here at the Passport, is what the, what used to be the Dickens', and we got to see the Dickens Opera House up there, too, which they're going to have opera here in March. Isn't that nice?
Yes.
The Opera Opera Exercise, or Second and Third, right over here on Third and Main. So that's pretty exciting. I feel like I'm missing one. What else do I do? Oh, visit Longmont, and that'll be Monday. So I'm always just, it's a whole month.
Yeah, that's a lot. I was trying to go back and think about museum, although that was the one where we talked. So I have museum advisory for the next one, Wednesday.
Right, yeah.
So I had to think about, the last Wednesday. The last Wednesday. So, you know, and I guess I want to give a shout out to Dom. I think she was the one who coordinated all this, the training for the members, the board members on...
Court orientation?
Yes.
New order?
Yes. So I heard a lot of outstanding feedback from the members of the museum.
And library advisory board members.
Good. So they just had nothing but rate reviews, so awesome. Good job.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so that was good. At the museum advisory board, one of the things that we discussed was, you know, we're kind of keeping track of how much money they've acquired for their $8.1 million goal for the expansion, and we're at 85% of the way.
That's impressive.
Yes, yes.
Have they ever released their donors list?
I don't know. I'll ask, but I'm sure you can access that.
Knowledge that.
So I, absolutely, but also...
They should buy a book or something.
I know, and something bigger than that, or you, yeah. Just like when we donated to, when we lived in San Diego, Petco Park.
Oh, yeah.
When they rebuilt the, when they built the stadium, we two got a, were able to put it, get a placard. So our little name is on there because we donated. So, so things like that, there's, there's opportunities to have recognition for that. So that, that was great news. In our, and you know, they're, they're doing what they do, and just getting those programs out and reaching out, especially with youth engagement. So it sounds like their, their mission, they were updating their vision statement, so really putting a focus on youth engagement and getting more active participants in that realm. And then for the library, you know, we were looking at, it seems like for this group, they really just want to know more how they can be an active group. And so really working with the friends of the library, finding ways to gain funds to support. They, again, they were asking me, you know, what's our commitment to the library as far as sustainable programs and staffing, because that's, that's been an area of concern, especially since the ballot measures didn't pass. One of the, I better find where I kind of... I was looking at the organizational chart. So one of the things we were looking at was just the staffing overall. So all of the library staff can fit nicely into one page, so even down to the temp staff. So it's not really, when we think about large-scale things of what they do in the community, it's not a lot of people doing a lot of work. And so how, you know, and I think this is where they're kind of pondering how they're going to rethink some things as far as around adult programming. It seemed like the emphasis was really keeping those children programming. You know, another option would be to charge for adult classes, whereas before they didn't, a lot of members on the board did not like that, because they felt like we're a public entity, we should be providing these services for free. So there's still ongoing debate on how they can cut corners but still provide quality programming, and as well as things that we can't necessarily see, like those digital. You know, all those people are accessing books and online materials through the digital format, but that also costs money. So while we might not be able to see it like a brick and mortar building or the books, these are things that are costing, that are, you know, weighing on the, on the library budget. And so what we as a council prioritize, and, you know, are we going to put our money where our mouth is, kind of, and I heard the whole thing. So I want to let them know that I was going to convey that, you know, it's, they're, they're working to try to find ways to, to cut things, but...
Be more concise.
And be more concise, but there are things that are non-negotiable, and that would be the, truly the children's program. And the stuff that Lilian does out in the community. And she does have, she does do a lot of support with the schools, and, you know, she's a one-man, one-woman operation, and she does great work. So, you know, we really hate, burnout, I think was another top area of concern that we were having, that people are getting expanded too much, as well as our people at the desk circulation. So they're dealing with a lot of angry people coming to the, you know, demanding things or being upset because, for whatever reason, they've received some things about wanting books removed for being inappropriate, so essentially the banning of the books kind of thing.
Yeah, we're not going to do that.
So we had that kind of conversation. And so really, the ones that are having to deal with it are, you know, the people at the information desk, the circulation desk, temp workers, you know, our lower-paid waiters are having to...
They're people who should volunteer for that, John.
For, to what?
To be the person who says we don't bend books.
Oh, yeah, exactly. And, no, but John has been really good about, it's like, okay, well, thank you for your concern, I'm not going to pull that book, and that's it. And so he's been really good.
See you later.
See you later. Don't check it out.
So what else? What other?
And then R-CAB was the other one. I was trying to remember, because we have an upcoming R-CAB. One of the big, so we separate out into subcommittees. So the subcommittee I am working on is SOIL. So in that discussion, the people that I was with had been talking about, and then when we came back as a bigger group, this also became a topic, a big concern or talk, is that we don't have a local or regional composting facility. And so really wanting to find, work with Boulder County, finding a way to make, you know, I was very quiet, I have my own ideas and things, but I just was listening at that point. So I didn't really, you know, I agree, but...
I should have mentioned that there is a resolution coming from the Sustainability Advisory Board on that subject.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think it's, yeah, exactly. So I kind of caught in the rap. So, yeah, that's, I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
So Housing Human Services Board, early years, just normal stuff, electing officers, approving bylaws, proving meaning, or posting where the meanings are, that kind of stuff. As well as, as they've done over the past few years, we now improved their branch application process. So they're still continuing to explore more ways to improve that process before they really get into the meat of the season. All they, same thing with planning zoning, all they went through was election chair and all that. And then they were informed that because Master Board of Appeals cannot make quorum, that they'll be taking on some of that workload. And so they'll be hearing their first variance as sort of the Master Board of Appeals on the 28th. Tomorrow night, they, their meeting will just be a couple of presentations. One, I believe, on Vision Zero, and I think the other one might be the Housing Assessment that we already have heard. Then MGLA just had Harold in for the State of the City, so.
Nice. Okay. I think everybody did.
Yeah.
Except me. So I'm pretty excited that we just got a news release, something that had been working on for basically 10 years. And so CDOT, Front Range Passenger Rail and RTD, per the group that Governor Polis put together, are, have been told basically that they're going to form a JPA, a Joint Partnership Authority, just like every other authority in other states, like the Port Authority in New York, the Transit Authority in Chicago, et cetera. And with that, part of the FISA money, the Fast Trucks Internal Savings Account for the Northwest Corridor, is going to go to putting in whatever we need to get that corridor started. And then it's going to transfer to Front Range Passenger Rail. So it'll no longer be RTD, and the reason for that is Front Range Passenger Rail is passenger rail, RTD is commuter rail. There is no dollars. Commuter rail would be in FTA, and passenger rail is FRA. So that way, they get federal funding through the same funding that the FR, that the Front Range Passenger Rail District is getting to finish that. And it'll be the first leg from Denver to Longmont to Fort Collins will be the first leg of Front Range Passenger Rail. So with any luck, we would get out of the tax for Fort, for Pass...
That's true.
I'm so excited about this. I can't tell you, we've been working on it for so damn long. So the tax for RTD Northwest Corridor would go away, and we would get the train. So for us, it's a win-win. However, there will be, and Governor Polis is pushing for a tax on Front Range Passenger Rail on the November ballot. And I really am in favor of this, because instead of putting another 20 years on for the Northwest Corridor, I think they can finish that very first segment from Union Station to Fort Collins within a seven-year time period. So that would be the first, that's the first leg. And there's, I just sent all of you the news release, so you can read, and...
So without reading the news release, is there any chance that what you said about getting out from under the RTD district tax, that that would be announced before the ballot?
Of course, because that's what I've been saying at all meetings, is that we are not, I said I'm not going to have the residents of Boulder County paying two rail taxes. When one of them's never going to happen, and the other one is a real rail authority. It's really rail, whereas RTD is not. It's not really a done deal. What I'm hearing on the FRPR board, we just had an executive session on it this morning, is that it's just flipped. The North with RTD has been yelling that we're paying a lot of money and we haven't gotten anything. And now the South, the FRPR board is saying, oh, yeah, all this is going into the North, what about the South? So it kind of made me smile at the meeting. But the difference is that both RTD and FRPR are statutory, created by the legislature. So the governor and the legislature can mandate. So I'm excited that we're going to make some headway, and I think it's a good, it's a good plan. So the other thing is that LMAC Chinese New Year is Monday, so Tim Waters is going to be the emcee, and I'm going to give the opening remark and then read the proclamation. So the Historic Preservation Commission, by the way, they're very happy about our vote, they are going to have their retreat next week, so we'll go to that. So far, that's all I've got.
One of the things in that plan, they may use the RTD tax as the contribution, which wouldn't, but then the FRPR tax, you know, they're...
They're going to flip it?
Yeah. They could pull that money and just transfer it over, which is, it's one of the options.
Yeah, and this isn't a done deal. This is their concept, and Harold and I met with Lisa Kaufman and John Putt, and basically they said that Longmont is pivotal, pivotal in the Front Range Passenger Rail District, that we have to do the Northwest Corridor. So, thank you.
And this is the one I was alluding to on those transportation projects and court services, that if this happens and they compress it in seven years, we've got to get first name transit, and so that it's ready.
Exactly.
At the same time, so that's going to press us in the work and how we start scheduling.
And a train stop, because the trains are much bigger than a bus, taller, so they probably won't be able to go into the transit station. And we did walk that corridor, and there was a lot of really good conversations, that little red train station, they talked about moving that over and making that the train stop, which would be kind of cool, because it's historical and it's kind of cute.
The liquor store or the other?
No.
The red.
We really get a lot of writers at liquor store.
It's the other one on First.
Yeah, the original train.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that is, that's very exciting for me, and that's all we got.
I forgot one thing, that I think we just completed a video that I have with the kids at the Youth and Family Services Board, the Life Skills Fair, March 30th. So be looking out for that little video. I haven't seen it yet, but they, I think I got the email about it, so I clicked on it. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, Suzie, you talked to your students and let them...
So we've been, so I've been letting parents know during parent-teacher conversations.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, okay. So I'm super excited, and Target may come in and give us some money for it, too, so I'm interested, yeah.
Cool.
The other thing, microtransit. So Harold and I have been talking about, and this came up actually because of Will Carsepp, who is the mayor of Berthoud, and he wants a rail stop for the Front Range Passenger Rail, so we met. And of course, he's not going to get one right away, but we're doing the microtransit here, and doesn't Fort Collins have microtransit?
I don't know that they do yet.
But, but everybody's looking at it, as well as Berthoud. So what, actually Harold's idea was that we need to talk to Firestone, Frederick, Berthoud, Fort Collins, and see if all of the cities could get microtransit, and then they could go border to border, to your point, that there's that three-mile, that we could make connections that way, so that everybody has availability to go to the bus terminals, to the rail terminals, that that's an option. Because I do feel bad for Frederick and Firestone. RTD just goes right up and won't cross over. They're not, they're not administered.
They're not administered yet.
So...
Although now they have the parking ride on their side, and they also have better trails. And one thing about the passenger underneath the highway is it connects, as the Transportation Board was concerned about transportation on bicycle, you know, how to get across that highway, so now that's corrected.
But bus staying also is, is one of the stops there, as well as...
Oh, yeah. And this is through CDOT on RTD. So is there any idea how much the tax rate will be for the Front Range Passenger Rail?
No, we haven't, no. And also, we're discussing of making only the section that is being developed pay the taxes. And then we'll add the sections to, they don't stop paying the tax once it's built, but if you're not going to have it for 15 years, then you don't have to pay the tax, which will...
Do we get credit for our 20 years of paying in there?
Well, in a sense, we do, because part of the FISA account is going to go to doing the, I would, I don't know exactly what they need. BNSF is giving their analysis for that route, hopefully in March, beginning of April. So whatever it is that BNSF says they need to do on that line, I think that's what that dollars of FISA that we have paid to Boulder County, because there are three other unfinished corridors that have been paying in FISA, too. corridors that have been paying in FISA, too. There's about $180 million in there. We can't take all of it because of those other three corridors. And that money, that portion of our money will go to doing the upgrades that BNSF says we need to do. We won't get it back, but it will be invested for what it was supposed to be invested in all along. So, does it, that makes sense?
Read the white paper that's, that's going to be attached.
Yeah. It's pretty involved.
I'm very excited. I think this thing's supposed to be ready to go in June or September, depending on how the, you know, the roadway work continues. We should have a lot of transportation options, so...
Well, we're moving along, so it's good. So let's morph into the ethics. Did anybody or anybody read this? Okay. I want to make a correction before we get your input, because the last, this will be the last discussion on this, and then we're going to go to council for a motion.
To no.
No, no, no. As soon as this, if we make corrections, then we have to correct it, and then we come back. The one thing I want to correct before we go in is that the meaning of what, it's on the last page. And, and this draft, actually, this last draft was put together with a conversation with legal Eugene May and Harold. And we discussed the former draft and pulled this all together. So, under complaints, it says, "Upon receipt of the hearing officer's written interpretation and/or recommendation regarding a complaint, the city clerk shall provide written notice to the complaint." That's not really true. The city, it will go to the city clerk's office, but the city clerk's office won't read any of the complaints. She's just going to be a pass-through. And then the pass-through will go to the hearing officer's mailbox. And the reason that I think it's important that it goes as a pass-through is that we need somebody to track these complaints that they can get in line. If we haven't heard anything back, she, they can put it on their calendar, check in two weeks, check in a month, see, see if there's any traction on it at all. So, the other thing is that the drop-down box for complaints, I had talked to Marika, I think I told you this before she left, and Ian, and they helped put this together. That will be on the new webpage, the drop-down box for what complaints can be made. Did you read it, or shall we have to read it again? It's disclosure of confidential information, a conflict of interest, improper influence or treatment, quasi-judicial proceedings, advisory opinion, and other violations of state law or the charter or code pertaining to unethical conduct.
It's the definition.
So did anyone want anything different? Do you think that there, those are adequate? Should we add more?
I think they're adequate, but I'm looking under complaints and advisory opinions. Is that where the wording change is? Because I didn't quite catch that.
Um, no, then that's the, that is the second to the last one. Other violation of state law or the Charter or Code. Did you get that?
I'm unclear where we are.
It is under...
What page and what section?
I'm online, so it's four.
Page one, page five?
It's, it's the second one, that one right there.
Page five?
This is, this would be the drop-down box.
So it's just that, it's a type of...
Right.
Well, that's my page four. It's, in the new viewer, it's on page four.
Four, okay. So, the reason that these are here, and Tim Waters brought this up actually, of what kind of complaints, what are we calling? I just lost, frivolous, thank you.
Oh, no.
That it would keep out frivolous complaints.
Yes, yeah.
That...
I didn't like the way you talked to me, so...
Exactly. So that leaves that out. And it says who's complaining.
It's considered a base on the judicial.
It's quasi-judicial. Do you want to explain what that is? So, was that for you?
You're the best at it.
You're the best.
So it's somewhere here in the definition? I think it's somewhere in the definition.
It's a, it's a conduct section. Page three in the viewer. It's C4 under rules of conduct. It's the last one. And Planning Zoning Commission and the City Council serve as quasi-judicial decision-makers on certain matters, traditionally land use. And this is where you apply pre-existing criteria to a single property, and property owners, property rights are at stake. And so there are due process protections for those quasi-judicial proceedings, so ensure a fair and impartial hearing. And this rule of conduct basically says, if, say, council is the decision-maker in a quasi-judicial proceeding, you will not represent or participate in proceeding from the other side of the dice. Because that would be improper for you to be a decision-maker and also participate either on behalf of the applicant or in opposition.
So how does that work with, if you're on the board? For instance, board of planning zoning or in a liaison or with the Historic Preservation Commission, for instance, if they're going to, can you imagine at this time, they'd have those, to see, they'd have those types of property rights involved? So you know about the situation before, comes before council, so you have already developed an opinion or participated in some decisions that you made for or against property owners or decision-making about the property?
So there are rules protecting process. The one you often hear from me is no ex parte communications. You shouldn't be speaking to anybody outside the hearing process. The whole idea is that you make the decision based on evidence presented at the hearing. If you have some other contact or affiliation with a property, my general advice is it needs to be, say, for the man, Coos, who votes the pump house. You know, he decided a lot of things on each street. And in terms of the conflict, it's whether there's any special treatment or burden on that property different from all those other businesses in the industry, right? Because we have citizen boards, and we have citizens elected to City Council. That's a beauty, that you're, you're in the community, and you can't, it'd be unreasonable to say, "No interest whatsoever." That's why the standard is, you know, a special burden or special treatment particular to your property, different from those at joint property owners. Does that make sense?
So somewhat specific to the situation.
Yes. But if you were on Planning Zoning, you're not a voted member, so you might just be there to hear it. So it's not like you're not, you might, at that hearing, start in your head to formulate an opinion about that, but you, as long as you're not saying to members of the public or anything, what you've already formulated, is that...
You know, council members and board members are allowed to educate themselves on the matter before them, certainly have staff reports. You know, that's why I generally discourage site visits, because then you have information that the other council members or RPZ members don't have. You know, there's some sort of remedial processes, you know, you can recuse, you can disclose whatever contact you've had, and make a decision on your own, whether you can remain a fair and impartial decision-maker, or under the rules of procedure, you can ask the body to vote whether they think you can remain a fair and impartial decision-maker. Does that answer the questions?
Well, I was thinking that if you, you know, just because you're on that board and you attend the meeting, but you're not a voted member, and you just paid attention while you were there, it doesn't mean that you, even if you start to establish at that point, you know, your own opinions on those things, as long as you're not talking to members of the public about, about your opinion on that before we have a hearing with City Council, you're, you're safe. If you start having, having conversations after that Planning Zoning Commission meeting, let's say, using that one for example, because we're talking oftentimes about property issues, then that would probably deem that you needed to have a conversation about, you know, accusing yourself. But otherwise, it's not a, it shouldn't be a big deal. I mean, everybody's going to have an opinion.
You can have your own opinion, if you keep it to yourself. There are ex parte communication rules under the due process protection, so if you attended a hearing, you should not be communicating with City Council as the decision-maker. Under the ex parte rules, preserve due process protections for all parties involved.
So there is the question that residents will, or the objection that residents will often make, which is, "I know that council member does not agree with our position because of their campaign statements they made during the campaign." That's not an ex parte commission, nor is it a reason why they should recuse for that?
That's not an ex parte communication. It could be a prejudgment, which is sort of a different sort of category of the due process protections. If you, in an extreme case, already have expressed, you know, "I'm going to vote this thing down no matter what happens," then maybe you might not be able to remain a fair and impartial decision-maker based on the evidence presented at the hearing. In that circumstance, you may have to recuse yourself, it just, it's very technical.
So that would be, though, there would be a distinction between campaigning regarding a specific parcel of land or, or case, as opposed to the general idea of how the planning area should be treated?
Yes, I'd say so. Each one is going to be a fact-specific inquiry.
Well, and it's different between a legislative act and a quasi-judicial act. So a legislative act in land use is annexation. The zoning and the variance is that's quasi-judicial, and they're distinctly different.
Okay, so my...
If I can, to some of the questions, Eugene, a lot of times when we start seeing things that we think are going to be an issue, Eugene will send emails to you all and say, "Highly likely this is going to be quasi-judicial. We recommend that you don't engage in conversations." And sometimes we'll do that really early in the process.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, do you want anything changed on how the complaint will go to a website? The complaint is made, it goes to the city clerk's office, she will route it on to, and this is my other question. We had discussed in previous pre-sessions about who is going to pay attention, or who is going to be the third party to hear the complaint. Should it be a hearing board? Should it be a task force or a hearing officer? There didn't seem to be any discussion, so I put hearing officer in here because of my conversations with Harold. And before we have comments, because Harold might have to leave, tell us why you think the hearing officer is a good idea.
Oh, there's a few things. One, and first and foremost, I think about our involvement in this, the biggest issue for us is we did not want staff involved in hearings.
In any way.
And, and so, hearing officer, they tend to have their own staff that can support them, and so we can go in and deal with the, they can go in and just manage it, so we don't have to touch it. If you have a board, then that's going to require staff involvement in that process, because we're going to need somebody to support them. The other thing we talked about is, the hearing officer reviews them all the time for personnel decisions and things like that. They're always separate and apart from it, and they're really, there's no way to make a political argument that this person is influenced, because if it's an appointed board, we think that opens up the door to a lot of assertions of, "Well, this board was appointed by this group of council, and they made this decision." And so, we really think it keeps us out of the mix as staff, and it does really keep it beyond arm's length in terms of a neutral party that reviews these things.
Where does the hearing officer come from?
An individual, or it's an individual or a staff? It's their party?
There's groups that, there are professional hearing officers that you can contract with, and they come in and hear the cases, or hear whatever it is. We'd have to do an RFP to obviously get that done, but...
And under the draft proposal, it's envisioned to be special counsel, an attorney, and a law firm. And, you know, a lot, a lot of these ideas came from Fort Collins, and I know they do RFP, and there's firms and attorneys that specialize in ethics. I get my CIE from attending their seminars, and even though it wouldn't be, you know, they're focused on attorney regulation, but they understand ethics more broadly. And that's who I hope would respond to.
So would we retain them, or would it be case by case? Because I don't expect there's going to be a lot of complaints.
If it is special counsel under the charter, we would retain them. Council would approve that contract, and then we just have them on a super hourly basis, or whatever else you want. So it's not a real cost.
Oh, good. That's what I was thinking of. So I need, I need...
I have a few questions. It all came back to me now, as I was thinking about it, and I have to read it. A few questions. One, I think it stated that whatever the hearing officer come up with, it will be presented during council meeting?
Um, I think that they...
Like for us to make that decision?
Exactly. Yeah. It might, it'll probably be a, an email to that, and we didn't, we can go for that, actually.
So, as proposed, the hearing officer would make a recommendation, written interpretation and recommendation. For these matters, certainly for council members and for charter boards and commissions, the City Council would be the decision, whether to adopt or modify the recommendation of the year ahead.
And that will be via email, or will that be at a City Council meeting?
It would be at a City Council meeting.
That's what I was wondering.
Okay.
That's what I was wondering.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I feel, I mean, should it be public like that in the City Council meeting? I know we have to vote on it, but...
Does it do its damage already? If it's going to do damage, it's going to do damage there to somebody. And then if there's no proof until we've had a hearing officer, then you, I think what you're trying to say is not all of a sudden you get, you have damage done to your reputation before you even have any chance to prove otherwise you're...
I think we get the information in the email, and then we go to City Council, and then we all decide on what should happen, according to the last part of that, of the code of ethics, right? Page, but then there won't be, I think it will, I think we really need to think about this, because then there won't be, if we're going to do this in the public, then there won't be public hearing either. I mean, people invited, public invited to be heard, won't be able to say anything. I don't know, it's just kind of tricky for me, as I'm thinking it, as I was reading it.
But do, does the public need to have input?
That's what, no, I don't think they do, but we're putting it out there, and I can only imagine all the emails we're going to get about it. I don't know, I don't know. I was just thinking about it, and I just wanted to hear what everybody else thought about that.
The hearing officer can get as much input as they need. They can call witnesses or whatever they need to do. So there's no point in having public invited to be heard weigh in on it, because it's not a public process, it is a council process.
It is a council process, and I'm not asking for public invited to be heard to speak on it, but what I was asking was, if we get all the, if, I know we have to vote on it, can we not vote on it on, in a pre-session, or does it have to be public? That's what I'm asking, because, you know what I'm saying? It's gonna be out in the public, and, I don't, I don't know, I've never been in a situation like this, so I was just thinking about how that will play out with the public, um-
I don't believe we can take official votes unless we're in session.
Right, that's what I thought.
It has to be in session.
Okay.
So, um-
If I may-
Yes, please.
The hearing officer does have screening criteria, so, you know, as proposed, if it's frivolous or groundless, it doesn't go anywhere, the hearing officer screens it out. If it's unlikely to be proven by preponderance of the evidence, the person who's the subject of the complaint has aggravated wrongdoing and has committed to sufficient redress, these are all sort of off-ramps to the written recommendation to City Council, or the matter will, has become or will become moot because the person who's the subject of the complaint is no longer a city official, or will no longer be a city official prior to the conclusion of the investigation.
It's only if they advise, if, if, if the advisory, uh-
The hearing officer?
From the hearing officer, the advisory hearing officer is that they come to the conclusion that, yes, there was improper behavior here, or whatever, then City Council needs to discuss it at a council meeting and make a motion to either follow the hearing officer's advice or not, but also, the, uh, the person that has been complained, what is that, the complainant, or-
Subject.
Subject of the complaint, thank you, gets to have a voice in a council.
I'll just make sure I validate all the ethics in November of next year.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm outta here.
Eight years for those, yeah.
So you've done this for a year.
Come with the blades, okay.
Um, so, does the hearing officer say, yes, this complaint rises to the level, and here is the complaint council, we need a hearing on this, or does the hearing officer actually make a recommendation to guilty or not?
I think it says it rises to the complaint. The hearing officer will not tell us we need a hearing on it.
Right.
That's their job. They have the hearing. And then they advise the results of that hearing. Yes, we think it rises to the level-
Recommend censure or recommends-
Most hearing officer first, then if, then the council.
Right.
And what point-
With an advice.
And if I was a hearing officer, I would make that recommendation. I would not recommend a penalty.
No.
I would leave that up to the council.
Right.
We have to-
And we don't have, there are not a lot of penalties at all, which, which was enough. Censure is the, the most used one, I would say, the most viable one. But if it is something egregious that is a continuing thing, then you can say things like, you may not come to any more executive sessions, or you can't be on boards or commissions, whatever. Do you believe one of those?
I'm gonna toss one question in, Eugene. Were you thinking these fall under normal cora rules? Do you think it, if we're gonna be specific here, it makes me wonder, should we quantify on the webpage form, which clearly isn't built yet, that may be subject to open record? Maybe we will get a request.
Do you do that?
May, I mean, under normal cora.
Yeah, because it will, it'll be in email, so it will be a cora.
Just in clarity for the council and the public, I didn't think I should have responded earlier.
Thank you, yeah.
So all the, all the frivolous complaints can be cored as well, or only the ones that the hearing officer says rise to the level, that there should be an examination?
Everything that goes into this drop-down box on the web, the complaint that is made on the web, because it's all email. But that is the point of, the type of request is that try to leave out everything that would be frivolous.
Well, that's not the intent.
No, basically, if you do this left or right, you look to be funny.
Yeah. But that's not, but that's not on there. It has to be, um, you choose one of these that it falls on.
Is harassment, like, a form of harassment up?
No. No. And that is why I put a link to the, to the ethical behavior.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because that, if, if we, that would go into rules of procedure, I think. I don't think that would be in organs. It would just be, this is what we expect of elected officials.
What's advisory opinion?
Advisory opinions are usually based on hypotheticals, you know. In this circumstance, would this be a conflict of interest, or I think are the probable ones?
But I mean, that's the drop-down menu, so what would somebody think?
Type of request. So is that they're requesting their advisory opinion from the-
From what they want to complain about. And then, then the hearing officers would say, this is frivolous. It does not rise to the occasion.
But there's also improper, improper influence or treatment. And if somebody to the point of, you know, it could be funny, they might say that improper treatment falls under that.
No, I think that would be more of a-
Would likely still be found frivolous, so.
Yeah, it would go farther than that, and that would never go to the public.
But the cora, yeah, it would, it could.
Yeah, you just answered, jumped the other way, where the, it would, that the complaint, once it goes in, that it's corable, as opposed to once it-
But they would also get the, uh, they would also get the advice from the hearing officer. Do you want me to take out advisory opinion? That's, if this sounds like it's going to be frivolous?
Well, no, I, I've just-
I'm not sure. Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I just think it's just, the thing that, it seems like only things that were founded should be allowed to be cored. Because otherwise, it looks like, you know, if somebody wanted to make it their life's mission, and we have sometimes, over the years, members of the public that have made it their life's mission to, to be kinda, uh-
Yeah, but you have to follow the suppression of information, you know.
Yeah, yeah, because I think we have to, you have to stay long.
So to make things non-corrible is, I think, a real slippery slope, and I don't know.
Well, if they said, you know, going to social media, the advisory opinion is that this is under free speech, and does not rise to the level. And, and, and we would keep staff out of that, we wouldn't argue about it on council. And, once that, once that message went out from a hearing officer, for me, it would, I don't know.
I have a question.
So, and this might be, you know, Eugene can help clarify this as well. So I'm looking at type of request. So, the, is it type of request that we're wanting from the city, or is it the type of complaint? Because it's, you know, conflict of interest, that's a complaint. Improper influence or treatment, that's a complaint. Could quasi, quasi judicial proceedings, that's, that would be a complaint in relation to that. Advisory opinion, so that, are you requesting what the hearing officer had advised on, or what, I guess, I'm looking at the other items, and those kind of all lead to that the, that one of, a council member had made a violation on that. So did they make a violation on an advisory opinion?
No, it's a request for-
It's a request for information.
But I do see what Susie is saying, because-
Because all of these are, you're listing out all the complaints, or the violations, except for that one, where it just requires-
Well, and now that you said it, when I look at improper influence or treatment, from a resident's point of view, if they feel they were treated improperly, or if they feel that, I can see improper influence, it needs to be stated differently, improper influence on a, uh-
I guess what's the, just improper influence?
I mean, these drop-down requests were meant to track the rules of conduct within this code of ethics.
Right.
And there is a section on improper treatment, or anything, so we have to follow this rule of conduct.
So I'm not sure what improper treatment is, but I do know that I get accused of having conflicts of interest on a monthly or even sometimes weekly basis, just based on my intellectual property record in my previous career. And so, despite the fact that, as you know, Eugene, I've made full disclosure, and, you know, we've explained that multiple times, it keeps coming up, just because it's a convenient way for people to, you know, drag red herrings across council procedures. And-
And that's what this is, is addressing.
Can we readdress it if there's a, a, something that we didn't see, that seems to be a kind of, probably an isolated situation of, of somebody abusing this form just to, to kind of rail against council's policies or practices? Is this something that we readdress if there, if it became, yeah, did you grab this?
No. I think we need to look at this differently. The way it is laid out, it goes to the hearing officer. It doesn't come to us to make a decision about whether this free speech, or it, that decision from the hearing officer is, this does not rise to the level of a complaint. They're the ones that need to address the complaint, not City Council, not staff.
And so-
Will it stop them?
No. Well, the question, the question is, the stuff off this form, when it reaches the hearing officer, is that part of the public record, or does it become a part of the public record only when the hearing officer delivers a recommendation?
I think that if, if, if the advisory comment is that this does not rise to the level of a complaint, then there, it's dead. We don't even discuss it.
Well, but in that case, those are the, those are the recommendations that everybody, the reservations that we've all been expressed, because, you know.
It's a little point at that point. It's like-
Yeah, but you still have the expense of the hearing officer.
We don't know what people are gonna put on here, and I think that-
Don't get me wrong, I actually support it. I just am, like, trying to think of all the possible abuses of it, but, uh-
Oh, yeah, we could go on forever on that.
I mean, no.
I don't think that anyone is gonna totally, constantly, constantly complain about something when their sentence is not-
That's, that's why, that, that lever there is why.
But you know why, Shakita, because they come to council, and our comment is, we have a place on our website for you to lodge a complaint. We are not going to discuss it up here now. Period. End of sentence.
Yeah, as long as we communicate that, give enough notice, that's the new process of complaints, that's very, very, very important.
Yeah, it is. And, um, and staff has a way to say, might be valid, go out to the website and lodge a complaint.
But I do think we need to be very specific and explicit as to what we're, what information that we are asking on those dropdowns. So to make sure, who is it addressing and who are they talking about? You know what I'm saying? Be very specific, because I think, people can, a lot of times, I know it's, it's them, people don't read everything. They just know this is a place to complain, and it is gonna be any, many, many more, or click, you know what I'm saying? So let's be very careful with how we word that, so they know who they're addressing it to, why they're addressing it, and what's the process. So I think that's very important.
And we are going over time for the LHA meeting, so, um, so, Susie, what we're-
You know what, really quick, really quick, I just, so when people are putting this, you know, they're writing up their complaint, perhaps we can say, you know, your complaint won't go, won't go through if you have not tied the complaint to which rules of procedure or which code of ethics did they violate.
And that could be-
So it has to be a violation that is what we have codified in language already.
That's, that's a good idea.
And with their complaint, what they experienced. So having those two tied together. If they're not tied together, that complaint is, it's, it won't be processed.
And that should be on the website above the complaint.
Yes.
And, thank you.
Maybe with an explanation or vocabulary, sometimes those terms are good.
Yeah, okay.
You can build a form where if you don't, someone-
That, yeah.
Or where you only have the charges that you want.
I think that makes, that will be better.
And, and actually, thanks, I remember now when we were looking at how to build the website, that is what they said, they can't really do any more than this until they know if it's gonna be a hearing officer, or whatnot.
And, and we have just barely touched the surface, I mean, other than saying, we want a hearing officer, we don't want staff at all. So we haven't been able to engage in this until we get council direction as a body to say yes or no in terms of time spent on it.
Okay, so, do we want a hearing officer versus a hearing board?
Yes.
I mean, it's simple, yes, not here.
Okay. Do we, are we okay with the dropdown box way of being able to lodge a complaint with, I'm gonna call it a preamble, above it, explaining and maybe definitions of each complaint? What does this mean? So that they, okay. Is there anything else about the 10-day, the hearing officer gives 10 days to the person that is, the complaint has lodged against to respond? And the reason why I'm saying 10 days is the person could be on vacation, it could be during the Christmas holiday, it could be, um-
Is that reasonable?
Is that a reasonable timeframe?
Can you request a, an extension if they were, like, on vacation?
It seems like 30 days.
I'm tweeting, 10 days is really short.
Yeah, I would think 30 days.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, if it's a reasonable amount of time. Okay?
That's what I wanna know.
I would think 30 days.
30 days?
Yeah. I'm also wondering if there could be some-
Till the end of my term.
I wanna say this. If it's considered frivolous from the hearing officer, if it could just be expunged.
If it could be what?
Expunged, you know, like removed. I know we're talking about there should be open records, but it could say, you know, the hearing officer-
It could be confidential, because confidential, uh-
Or just, it's being identified.
Or just saying that you've found, you know, so many, 20 frivolous quotes or something. Because if you catch a dropdown menu, and you don't have something that relates to your actual complaint, where does that go? Does it just disappear?
Well, I think they just need us to, you all just need us to say, yes, go ahead, the hearing officer, this and that, and then we'll come back with other stuff. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, we need the groundwork.
Thing where I get anxious is, what, we may wanna go this, this, and this. State law regulates what is an open record and what is not an open record, and so, the body, we can't deviate from that. That's, that's the circle, and everything we have to do has to be within that circle of state law and open records.
And, um, that can be on the website.
It's challenging. It's gonna be open record. These are what these, the definitions of these complaints, that's what this means.
And all of that will be communicated prior to, before we even implement all of this, so.
Exactly.
Okay.
Does council want staff to spend time now on digging into this a little bit more?
I think yes.
And your 10% that you have to give us, and how much, and how much of that 10% would this take?
Mainly this guy.
It's just a few. When I work with the on-teen-putting, yeah, it's not-
Less time than we just been talking about.
Yeah, for real, let's put a lot of words.
And, and the forms, once Eugene figures, here's out the form stuff, it's easy for us to work with. The web people know that. That, that doesn't take a lot of time. the web people know that, that, that doesn't take a lot of time.
Okay, I know, we gotta move.
Great, I'll have you bring it.
And me too.